Ready?
Yeah.
Okay. Welcome to a special meeting of the Cedric County Commission, acting as the Board of Health. Today's Thursday, July 2nd, 4:00 PM in the afternoon. Commissioners, I would express my thanks to you for having this special meeting and showing up. Thank you to our staff and our media for being able to broadcast this. Is this on Channel 8 or just YouTube Live?
On YouTube and on Facebook.
Okay, I understand it's on YouTube and Facebook on the Cedric County Facebook website, as well as, yeah, there you go. Okay. With that, we'll call the meeting to order. Madam Clerk?
Roll call. Commissioner O'Donnell?
President.
Commissioner Dennis?
President.
Commissioner Howell?
President.
Commissioner Cruz?
President.
Chairman Meitzner?
President. Madam Clerk, thank you for being here as well. Okay. Next item, please.
Public agenda.
Commissioners, since we announced this special meeting, I just received, we have an Excel spreadsheet with over, I counted up at the end, very end, there's 505 comments that we've received from public on email to the website or to our place. So, didn't get a chance to tally them up, but I know we've all, in the last 48 hours, if not 72 hours, we've received nearly about 500 emails. I have tallied those, and I'll comment that, in my case, there were nearly 50/50, slightly a few more for the masks versus against the masks, it was all about masks, and a couple of them about other things. So, that's my comments about the public agenda. Any of you others want to comment about their responses that they've had on public agenda? Okay, being none, then a motion to accept the 505 comments on the public agenda. I'll second it. Okay, Madam Clerk, call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell? Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
Aye.
Commissioner Cruz?
Aye.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. Madam Clerk, next item, oh, Commissioner Cruz.
I'm sorry, one thing, one thing I noticed from our conversation earlier today with the business community was an overwhelming interest to read what the public comments were going to be. So, what is the best way for the public to read the public comments that were sent to all of us? Is there, I mean, will they be submitted into their record? How do people read all of those comments? And where do they find those at?
Good afternoon, Chairman and Commissioners, Tanya Cole, Assistant County Manager. I just might clarify, the information that I sent to Commissioners just this afternoon included a little over 500 comments that we received on the website. There is a second way for the public to also send comments, that was through the communications email as well. And I think we received just a little over 250 emails as well. If we want to publish those public comments, we can find a way to push that information out on our website as well.
Well, the question was more concerning about not being able to hear other public comments. And so, I wonder if it would be the will of the commission, I'd like to publish those so that people can read what the comments were from everybody else. So, I would like to make a motion that we publish those comments, both the spreadsheet and the emails from our communications email address, so that everybody in the public can read exactly what we have been sent.
Absolutely, we can make that available.
I don't even think that takes a motion, since you're doing it, and that's a great idea. I kind of thought that it needed to be part of the public record anyway, I thought it should be visible, so.
Okay. So, what's the easiest way for someone to find those, though?
We will make sure that we get it posted on our website. We can put a link out there on the front website. Where the link is where you can actually put your comments, we'll make sure that there's a link there as well, where they can go to find what the public comments were for today's meeting.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate that.
You might just give us a couple hours to make sure we can make that happen.
Of course, yeah, thank you.
Yes, thank you. Great, thanks for bringing that up. Okay. Madam Clerk, next item, please.
New business, item A, Discussion of Executive Order Number 20-52, requiring masks or other face coverings in public.
Good afternoon, Justin.
Good afternoon, Commissioners, Justin Waggoner, Assistant County Counselor. First off, wanted to start off with kind of a brief roadmap of what I'll cover when I speak today. First, I'm just gonna do a summary of Executive Order Number 20-52, also discuss the recently enacted state legislation, which is why this matters in front of you today, and then also talk about what your options are on this matter. First, starting off, earlier this morning, Governor Kelly released Executive Order Number 20, Executive Order Number 20-52. It's applicable statewide unless a county's county commissioners opt out of it. And I'll talk more about opting out, or making it, I should say, less stringent, I think is the actual statutory language, a little bit later. But it becomes effective tomorrow at 12:01 AM, and it would require any person in Kansas to cover their mouth and nose with a mask or other face covering, anytime that they would be indoors in public places, when they'd be riding public transit, taxis, Ubers, those types of things, or when they would be outdoors and unable to maintain six feet of social distance from other people. That six feet social distance requirement wouldn't apply to people who they reside with. And so, that's how it applied to individuals. It would also apply to businesses and organizations, and it would require them to have their employees, customers, visitors, members, or members of the public wear a mask or other face covering when the employees would be working in any space visited by the public, when the employees are working in a space where food's prepared, packaged, or distributed, when the employees are working in or walking through common areas like hallways, stairways, elevators, that type of place. Also, customers, members, visitors, and members of the public would also be expected to wear masks, the executive order. And then, lastly, on the employer part, any employees who would be in a room or enclosed area where they would be unable to maintain at least six feet of social distancing from one another, and once again, that requirement would not apply if you had coworkers who happened to reside together. The, there are a number of exceptions to the executive order. I'll go through what are probably the most salient exceptions. First off, if a kid is five years old or younger, they would not have to wear a mask or face covering under the executive order. It also notes that children under the age of two years, children two years of age or under should not wear one because of risk of suffocation. Also, the second exception would be people with medical conditions, mental health conditions or disabilities that prevent them from wearing a face covering. And this would include persons with a medical condition for whom wearing a face covering could obstruct breathing. The third exception is persons who are deaf or hard of hearing or communicating with someone who is deaf or hard of hearing, as that could be an impediment to communication. Also, the fourth one would be for a face covering, if it would create a risk to a person related to their work, as determined by any local, state, or federal regulations for workplace safety guidelines. The next one is if somebody is receiving a service and they have to take off the mask to access their nose or mouth. For example, if you went to the dentist, obviously you wouldn't be able to keep your mask on and have the dentist perform work. And then, the next one is for, if somebody's at like a restaurant or a bar where they're eating or drinking, they would not have to wear the mask, obviously, when they would be eating and drinking, provided they maintain six feet of social distance between individuals. And that requirement would not apply to other people who are sitting at your table, seated together, or who may reside together. But that would otherwise apply, if you were waiting on your food, for example. I don't think that, I think at that point, they would expect you, under the governor's order, to be wearing a mask. The next exception would be athletes who are engaged in an organized sports activity that allows athletes to maintain a six-foot distance from others with only infrequent or incidental moments of closer proximity. The order doesn't go on to elaborate, it's to say what those sports are and are not. I mean, just thinking through this, I mean, there's some sports where, you know, you're usually not that close to anyone, golf, tennis, in baseball, you're usually not within six feet of another person very often. There's other sports where that's, you know, it's part and parcel of the sport is being that close to someone, like wrestling, basketball, you're usually quite often gonna be within six feet of someone. So, it does appear to kind of distinguish some between some sports as to whether they would or would not be exempted from the mask requirement. Also, if somebody's in a court proceeding, they would not have to wear a mask. The executive order defines public space as any indoor or outdoor space that's open to the public, does not include private residential property or private offices or workspaces that are not open to customers or public visitors. The term of the executive order, it indicates that it would remain in force until either it's rescinded or until the statewide state of disaster emergency that the legislature extended is no longer in place. That's been extended as a part of House Bill 2016 through September 15th, it could certainly be extended beyond that by subsequent action of the governor and the delegated legislative body. So, that's a quick summary of the executive order. I guess I'd ask first, before I move on, if there are any questions about the executive order itself, or if you'd prefer me to move on to, I guess, the second part of the presentation.
I don't see any questions yet, Justin.
All right. And the reason you're here today, as I kind of mentioned earlier, House Bill Number 2016, Section 33, includes an amendment to KSA 48-925. In particular, and that's a statute where the governor can issue executive orders during a state of disaster emergency. It details how the powers the governor's executive orders can have. And one of the things that was added into that legislation was the ability, when there's a statewide executive order the governor issues, it allows counties to go through a process, when I say counties, boards of county commissioners, to go through a process to consider those and potentially adopt less stringent requirements. And I'll just read from the statute, subsection H of that act. "The board of county commissioners of any county may issue an order relating to public health that includes provisions that are less stringent than the provisions of an executive order effective statewide issued by the governor. Any board of county commissioners issuing such an order must make the following findings and include such findings in the order. First, the board has to consult, the board is consulted with the local health officer or other local health officials regarding the governor's executive order. I will point out, Dr. Menz is here today, and so certainly, if you do follow the statutory process, I'd urge you to consult with him. Second, following such consultation, implementation of the full scope of the provision of the governor's executive order are not necessary to protect the public health and safety of the county. And then, third, all other relevant findings to support the board's decision." So, to summarize, if it gives an ability for a county to opt out or carve out either in part or in whole, the governor's executive order make it less stringent within that county, but it does require an order, the adoption of an order, and also consulting with the local health officer, and within that order, there need to be findings from the board as well.
Justin?
Yes.
Just for, I didn't, I'm very familiar with these steps, one, two, and three. Can we make a copy of those, so each of the commissioners can have them?
Would you like a copy of that part of the statute? I could certainly do that, I don't know, give me just a second, Chairman. Kate, do you happen to have a copy of that, Kate? Okay, I think she'll get that for us, so.
Okay, thank you.
You want me to proceed, though, Chairman?
Sure.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, at this point, I wanted to talk through what options you have. I've broken it down into three options, I mean, there may be, one of these in particular probably has a lot more sub-options, if you will, but maybe for the sake of simplicity, they've kept it at three primary options. Really, the default under state law, if you take no action today, if you hadn't met today, the default would be that the executive order would go into place tomorrow. And that's option one, which would be to allow the executive order to go into place. It requires no action on your part. If the board would prefer to do so, you could certainly vote to endorse or support the executive order, but there's no requirement under law that you would have to approve a resolution or order for that to take place. Option two would be to make the executive order less stringent in some fashion. And when I say less stringent, I think you could, for example, you could pick out certain items that maybe you think are too restrictive in the order. For example, instead of saying kids five and under should be exempted from the face mask requirement, you could say kids 10 and under should be exempted. If you think that, you know, I talked about the distinction between different sports, maybe if you thought a more appropriate distinction was at hand, you could do that. Those are just examples, there's any number of modifications you could make to that, so I'll just try to give a couple examples that could come up. And then, another example of a way to be less stringent would be to essentially turn the governor's mandate to wear a mask into a recommendation. Again, there's a number of possibilities that could be put in place there, but instead of actually mandating it legally, it could be strongly recommended or recommended to be done by people within Cedric County and businesses within Cedric County. Any action under option two would require three votes. And then, option three that I have on here would be kind of a variant of option two, but would just be to opt out of the executive order, so that the mask mandate would not apply within Cedric County. And that would be, you know, it really is a variant of making it less stringent. If the, as mentioned earlier, if the board's will would be to take options two or three, there'd need to be an order with findings to support that action. And I guess with that, to that end, I'm gonna pass out some sample orders that our office has drafted, and give them to you. I do want to stress, in handing them out, they are not indicative of a recommended action, they are solely so, because this is a legal matter, I mean, to an extent that you have to follow the statutory requirements. And so, if you are to adopt findings, the idea would be this a framework or a starting point to begin that discussion. So, I'm gonna hand them out, one of them would be a, it's termed a mask recommended draft, and the other one would be an opt-out draft. There's a watermark that accompanies each of those that would show that, so I'm gonna go ahead and pass those out real quick.
Justin, while you're passing those out, I'm just reminded that this executive order, after we've all had a chance to read it from this morning, it does just references masks, mainly. It doesn't really talk about other stuff that, over the last four months, that we've talked about a lot of stuff, this is related to masks, so. Show us what's the difference. I feel like I got two.
Well, and I'll go ahead and, I'll explain a little bit more as to what the difference is between the two as well. The, and to clarify, and I hadn't said this before, those were passed out, the two drafts, they both have, under Section 2, additional relevant findings. And those have been drawn upon, in part, there's been comments that various county commissioners have made as to, you know, the impact that Cedric County has had. And for the sake of some transparency to the public, because this draft, you know, with the timing of the governor's order, how quickly this has all moved, this isn't part of a planned-out agenda that we've had weeks in advance, you know, this is certainly something that's come up quickly. You know, one of the findings has to do with the prevalence of COVID-19 within Cedric County, where about 17.7% of the state's population, as of KDHE's information reported yesterday, we have about 9.12% of the COVID-19 cases in the state. You know, there's other information that talks about, you know, the hospitalization admissions remaining significantly lower than back in April, I think when we hit our peak. The county's dashboard, which is based upon consultation with the local hospitals on a weekly basis, indicates that our area hospital status is described as good. The, there's been some discussion, as I'm sure you've seen, about the enforceability of any measures that are taken, and in particular, in this case, the executive order, would be challenging to enforce. And I think it is worth pointing out, I don't think, from a public health standpoint, enforcement of an order is really the aim anyways. I think compliance and getting people to follow those best practices is the true aim. But if there is a valid, you know, executive order on file, it does carry the force and effect of law. And so, confusion or difficulties with enforcement are listed as one of the reasons, the findings on that additional findings document. It also notes the number of deaths that have occurred in Cedric County, there've been only three deaths of individuals who do not reside in adult care facilities, so there's a low prevalence of COVID-19 deaths amongst county residents who don't live in one of those facilities. And then, lastly, on there, notes that as part of putting in place a less stringent approach, the executive order, the county could strongly endeavor to obtain masks and face coverings, provide them to individuals and businesses. Those are all draft provisions, you could, if you did even adopt something like this, which is not even something that's completely at the will of the board, you could delete them, add to them, modify them, as you would see fit. So, it's really just a starting point, if you took that action. I think it's worth pointing out that you could, if the statute required an order for option one, to follow the governor's order, I think you could find good findings and bases to do that as well. So, it's not to say that those reasons don't exist, because I think there would also be grounds there. The, you asked for the differences between the two documents, the primary difference would be that option, if you look at section, if you look at the masks, the opt-out draft, the one with that watermark, it clarifies in determination, Section 3 on Page 2, that the county would just not apply the executive order within Cedric County as a result of those findings. The findings would be more or less the same, I think. Whereas on the determination on Section 3 of the masks recommended draft, on that document, it would say, "All of the provisions of that executive order, Number 20-52, that would otherwise require masks or face coverings, would now not be mandated, but would instead be strongly recommended measures within Cedric County." That's really the key difference between the two. And at this point, I would also say that, you know, these, as I noted, these are more or less a starting point. If the board would deem it appropriate to end up pursuing an option two or three, you could certainly add additional findings, as I noted, the board could recess, and our office would be happy to work on any of those recommendations that would change, or findings that would change, I should say. I did want to note, the recommended action on this item is to take the action the board deems necessary, whether it would be options one, two, or three. Also, I did want to note, as I mentioned earlier, Dr. Menz is available for consultation, and I'd be happy to stand for any questions this time.
All right, Justin, thank you. You've helped getting these drafts and other information, kind of goes along with getting a major written executive order, basically six hours before we meet and seven hours before it becomes in effect, so. I'm not being critical of you, I'm being thankful that you've done this hard work in a very, very short window.
You're welcome, Chairman, thank you.
So, my appreciation. Okay, I don't see any questions yet, so, part of the process is to consult, I think, with Dr. Menz, if that's, Dr. Menz, if you're available? Hello again, doctor?
Gerald Menz, Cedric County Health Officer.
Doctor, it's, I'll point out, it's not a year later than the last time we saw you.
I'm a little disappointed.
Me as well, but it's good to see you. So, so you've seen, the governor's had a chance as well to look at it, I assume. Do you have, can you share any comments of?
Well, I'll give some general comments, and if you have questions, I'll try to answer them.
Okay, thank you, sir.
The number of cases that we've seen, reported yesterday and today, are the highest we've ever seen. We're getting to the point where the county is having, the health department is having trouble contacting all the contacts. We are still contacting the cases, but contact tracing is getting to the point, we don't have the person power to do it. We would hope this would be a transit problem, but the way the numbers are going, they've been going up, up, up. And I think we had over 100 cases yesterday, and when they came in this morning, we already had 70 cases. As opposed to late May, we were having 12 to 15 cases a day. So, something's going on. I can't give you a scientific reason why the case load is going up so much, but we can verify it's not due to more testing. Our testing numbers have been pretty stable, so the percentage of positives is going up, too. The hospitals have quite a few patients in the hospital now. I can't give you the exact number, that changes from day to day. They do tell me that there seems to be a slight shift to a younger population of people in the hospital, but there's still older people in, too. I know the hospitals are concerned about the trajectory of our cases, so I give you that as a preface for any suggestions. As I told you Wednesday, I think we do need something to help the public understand the need to wear masks. It's probably the most innocuous, painless, relatively speaking, intervention we can do that would, we think, based on other countries and other states, it seems to be effective. How effective is hard to quantify, but it does seem to be effective, and hopefully would have the least impact upon our economy. So, I think, all that considered, I personally, as a physician and as your health officer, feel that we should adopt some order that involves helping the public understand why they need to do this, encouraging to do it in a widespread manner. I'll be happy to take any questions you have.
Okay, Commissioner Howell?
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just, every time you come here, I want to ask one of the questions I always ask, you know what that question's gonna be, don't you? How many hospitalizations do we have today, do you know, for COVID-19?
I have not called both hospitals and gotten an accurate count, but they tell me it's in the upper 20s.
Upper 20s. I'm getting, I did receive a little bit of conflicting information. I asked last week, and I had two different answers, one answer was 14, the other answer was, I think, around 30. So, I wasn't sure why I got different answers, but I'm not so sure I'm getting the same apples-to-apples comparison from each week, so that's one of my concerns.
I understand, that is the number the hospital's chief medical officer gave me this afternoon, and he wanted to express, from him, through me, to you, that he is quite concerned about the direction that things are going. The hospitals will do their best to accommodate anything that comes in the door, but it could get to the point where finding staffing, I think they can find beds, but finding staffing for a surge would challenge them. Not trying to be sensational here.
Just, thank you for the answer there, just an opinion question from you, it seems like the governor's order seems to state, basically, that masks are what you do when you can't socially distance. Socially distancing is still apparently the preference, and I think I read that through her order, and it seems like that's kind of a part of the takeaways, would you agree with that?
Yeah, the general feeling is, if you can stay six feet away from people, you're probably okay, but if you're gonna have to get closer than that, you need a mask, and that does seem to attenuate the transmission of the virus.
And we're probably less concerned about certain situations, for example, if you're with family, I would say you're not, or in your own home or your own car, or maybe with close friends, maybe less concerning then, I mean, than you would be with the general public, people you don't know, would that be fair?
I think with your family, obviously, you live with them, and it's just not practical, and it's not accepted socially in our society to wear a mask in a home environment, so I think...
I'm trying to, I guess, just imagine how this would be used. Again, let me just say upfront, every business, private property, they could make whatever rules are more stringent than whatever order is issued by the state or the county. So having said that, say, for example, Spirit Aerosystems wanted to have an order to have masks by manufacturer, employees involved in manufacturing airplanes, for example. They could do that, even if we didn't. They could still issue that order, because it's a private company. They could do that, much like Costco did, for example. I think everybody knows that if you go to Costco, they're going to make you wear a mask, not because the government says that that's what they have to do, they just did this on their own. Would that be about right? So one of my questions is, let's say you're at Spirit Aerosystems, and say there's not a, this order doesn't happen for whatever reason. If someone is there, say, there on Saturday morning, and the place is not as full as it normally would be, and the nearest person to them is 50 feet away, according to this order, if we were to issue the order, they would have to wear a mask. It would not be Spirit's choice, we would make that choice for them. But in that situation, I'm not sure that a mask is really useful in that situation. Would you care to comment on that?
I'm not going to comment on what the law says, although...
No, I guess what I'm saying is, if the nearest person's 50 feet away, would it be reasonable, is a mask still really useful in that situation, if the nearest person's 50 feet away?
I'm not worried about two people 50 feet away of giving it to each other.
And I agree with you. I think that's the right answer, but my concern is, the way this is written, this would make that decision for Spirit, that they would be required to wear a mask.
And that's what I can't answer, he would have to answer that.
I have some other questions kind of like that, but I think, I'm going to sit back and listen to the discussion. I have some concerns about the order, the way it's written, but I think we could make some tweaks to it, make it better, but I'm not sure that's the right answer necessarily. I'd like to hear what the other commissioners say. Thank you, Dr. Minns, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Commissioner Dennis.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If you roll back our thinking to March, when we first got into this, and you came and talked to us, the whole purpose of what we were doing at that point was to flatten the curve, to keep from overloading the hospitals. The problem is, in that period of time from March to now, we still don't know what the capacity is of the hospitals. Nobody's ever told us how many beds that they have. We can't find out how many people are in those beds, how many people are in those beds, or in ICU, or just in the hospital for something else, how many of those people are on ventilators. So it's hard for us, it's been hard for us ever since March, to make good decisions without good data. And so that's what's always concerned me, is if we don't know what the capacity is, we can't tell whether or not we're causing problems, or whether we've got to take major actions or not, because we don't know the outcome of it. So that's just a comment. If you can find some way that you can get us information so that we can make good decisions, that's what we need. We need the information to make great decisions.
You have every right to ask the hospitals to give that to you. I don't know, I don't think they're required to give it to you, but that would have to be information they would have to share with you. I don't have the, I'm not, I don't have the right to share information that they consider proprietary.
But every day when I read in the Eagle, they talk about the number of cases go up. Well, we're testing 1,000 people a week, so the cases are going to go up. You know, the commissioners get criticized for not taking any action, but we have to have information to base any action on. And I don't think that we're getting the information we need to base action on, and we're being unfairly criticized as a result of that.
I apologize if I come across as critical, I'm just trying to get the information. Our testing numbers have been flat for the last three or four weeks, so the percentage of cases being positive is what's going up.
But those numbers should drive hospitalizations, and if you look at our dashboard, it says "good."
I don't have anything to add. I don't know how the word "good" is derived.
I don't either. That's our problem. How do we make a decision when we say it's good?
I can share with you, the hospitals have expressed to me that they're concerned, both hospitals have said they're very concerned about the trajectory.
Well, the other problem is that every Monday, while folks do get a briefing, and I appreciate that they share the information with us, but all of us need to get that information, and if we've got questions at that time, we need to be able to ask it. Because of open meetings laws, we can't even ask the questions. We just kind of get secondhand feedback, and we can't follow up on it, because we don't have the ability to follow up.
I wish I could help you, you could ask the hospitals.
I know. I'm just expressing my frustration, doctor. I am not saying that you're not helping, and you give us great advice, I appreciate that, but it's frustrating when we're trying to make good decisions, and we don't have the information to make good decisions. But I appreciate what you do for us.
You know, I can appreciate your frustration. It's been frustrating to me to have to deal with a virus that we've never seen before, and we don't know a lot about, and we're having to learn as we go, and I think all the medical profession has been very frustrated that, as you know, originally, in February, we didn't think masks did much, that studies were then done, but we'd never seen this virus, some of those studies have been done on this virus at that time. Subsequent studies have shown, looking at populations where they wear a mask, and populations that didn't wear a mask, you had a higher incidence of cases than the populations that weren't wearing a mask. So there's pretty good evidence today that the medical profession is accepting, is masks do have an effect, even though originally, we poo-pooed that idea. So I'm saying, I understand the public's frustrated, and we're frustrated, because the message at times has been a little garbled. So I appreciate your concern.
Very good. And please don't take my comments as critical of anything that you've done, or any advice you've given us.
I don't, sir, I understand.
I appreciate it, thank you.
I share your frustration.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
We've established that there's frustration. Thank you. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you. I just want to point out, for the record, that we've heard from both Commissioner Dennis now and Commissioner Howell stating that they did not receive numbers. I specifically asked for the hospital numbers today, and was provided the numbers, all commissioners were provided today's current numbers at 3:16 PM. And I'm just going to read the email that all commissioners received, so that it's for the record, and everyone knows what each commissioner received, just short, you know, oh gosh, it's a couple of hours now ago. So here it is. "To complete the information regarding today's numbers, in addition to Wesley's 12-plus cases in the hospital, they have one case that is admitted as a patient under investigation. Their Monday numbers were six positive cases, six patient under investigations. I do not know what percentage are in the ICU today, or how many events, it was not provided to me. Via Christie reports 15 COVID-positive cases today and one patient under investigation. Of the positive COVID cases, 13 are on the general floor, and two are in the ICU. There are 13 available floor beds today and eight available ICU beds. Their Monday numbers were 14 positive cases and nine patients under investigation. We are still working to get capacity numbers for both of these hospitals, so that we can display those on our website." Additionally, down below, it says, which was a foreword of this email, "From Wesley Medical Center, we are up 12 positives, and we are getting very concerned. The governor's executive order needs to be emphasized by the county commissioners. Everyone needs to wear a mask in our county, starting immediately."
Okay, thank you. Commissioner Dennis.
Well, thank you, Commissioner Cruz, for reading that to us, I appreciate it. It did come in, from what you said, at 3:16. I have answered every email that I've gotten, and I kept a tally, and I received 522 emails that I have been going through answering, so if I missed that at 3:16, I apologize. Thank you.
Okay. Any questions right now?
Chairman, just one quick comment to Commissioner Dennis's request on capacity, and Dr. Minns alluded to this briefly. We are, both Wesley and Via Christie are trying to be cooperative with us. I don't want to paint that as any other picture. It's frustrating for them to try to explain capacity to us. It is more difficult than just a number of beds or a number of rooms. There is a staffing issue in both of these facilities, and just because you have beds available, but no nurses to take care of people, that begins to impact and adjust that number. So what we're trying to get to over time here and through dialogue, is perhaps a range, Commissioner, to get you some type of data, which I know you want, but we want to make sure that it's accurate, and the most accurate number we'll probably be able to give you will be a range, because it's more than just physical space, it is the staffing component that makes it so hard for them, I think, to give it to us. So they are cooperating, we're trying to come up with something salient that we can put onto our website that's meaningful, we're not quite there yet, and we hope to have it next week, because we know this is going to be important moving forward for you all to create policy.
And I would want to confirm, that's what I was trying to say, that they can find additional places to put a bed, but there's a limit on how many nurses they can get, and without nurses, they just, they're going to be difficult to provide the care they want.
Right. Thanks, Tom, for your comments. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. Dr. Minns, you said testing hasn't really increased over the last five weeks, it's stabilized? Sorry. Has, so, Dr. Minns, were you saying earlier that testing, the numbers haven't increased?
That's my understanding.
And... All right, maybe this is a question for Adrian.
Adrian Burns, Sedgwick County Health Director. In the last week and a half, we've begun to see an uptick in the number of people tested. Prior to that, in the last three or four weeks prior to that, our numbers were consistent, the testing numbers were consistent as we began to see the cases increase, so then we knew that it was not connected to the cases, to the amount of people being tested.
Okay, but more people are being tested?
In the last week and a half, yes.
Right, right, okay. We're on the same page. And do we track what other hospitals and doctors' offices are doing, or we just rely on them to give the information to us in KDHE? Because, you know, a lot more clinics have testing now, they didn't have it three weeks ago, or a month ago.
We have all of that data, so whenever anyone has a positive, they either report it to us and KDHE, or just KDHE, and then KDHE reports it to us through the EpiTrak system. So we have all those numbers, yes.
You have the positives, you have all the numbers to say they had two positives, but they tested 50 people.
We also know, we know how many people were tested.
Okay, you do know how many.
Yes, yes.
So when you combine that with what we're doing, wouldn't you agree that testing's gone up?
Right now, I'm just aware of what our numbers are.
Right, not globally, not for the whole county, just ours. Right. It'd be interesting to see if there was any way to collect that, but if that's impossible, I understand as well. But, you know, I just wanted to make sure that we were clear, more tests have been happening over the last week and a half.
Yes, our numbers were increasing before then, case-wise, but yes.
Thank you.
I think it would be fair to say that the proportion of increase in testing is small, much smaller than the increase in cases.
Sure.
It's going up like that, and we don't have the capacity to increase testing like that?
Yes, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell, for helping that. I don't see any lights on. If we can deviate for a second, I'd like to ask our legal, Justin, if you can come up, I have a couple of questions. Okay. Gosh, I wish I was an attorney, but, so...
Careful what you wish for, right?
I know. But my limited experience, I did a lot of contract, I feel like good about reading contracts, but not legal opinions on this, so... Is it my understanding that, this is a little bit more of a broad, I've got two questions, and one is a little more broad, and one is specific in the order. So if the governor, is there, are you, is there any question that her legal statutory authorization to issue this executive order, is it required to come with this, and I'm going into the enforcement world? And even though she passes down the enforcement, are we required then to come up with an enforcement plan to abide by her plan, or can her plan be deemed not relevant if we don't have an enforcement that we do?
That's a good question, Chairman. Nothing in the law would task the Board of County Commissioners with coming up with an enforcement plan. It would be, it would be an executive order that would have the force and effect of law. In the statute, if somebody violates the executive order, let's say it's effective in a given county, and somebody doesn't wear a mask contrary to it, there's a statute in the Emergency Management Act that makes violation of a governor's executive order, it used to be a crime, it used to be a Class A misdemeanor when we talked a couple months ago. Now, it's been modified, it's no longer a crime, it could be, the person who would be in violation of that executive order could be charged with a civil penalty of up to $2,500. It also, it delegates that ability to file an action in that case to either the Kansas Attorney General, or the District Attorney in your county. So Mark Bennett's office could file charges. It also allows for the Attorney General or the District Attorney to file, they could seek an injunction or a restraining order against a person, in this case, it'd be a person or a business who would not be complying with the executive order. So those would be options that would be on the table, but it does not, it certainly does not task the Board of County Commissioners with any enforcement responsibilities under the executive order. I don't know if that fully answered your question, though. So if there's more to it, let me know.
Well, when you say, when you introduced the civil part, I didn't know if, you know, if somebody sees somebody walking down the street, and they're not wearing one, would they, could they file a civil complaint, and then...
They would not be able to.
They would not.
I mean, let me explain, they would not be able to under the executive order, only the Attorney General or District Attorney could file an action, that action. People can file civil cases for all types of things, but that's not as a result of anything in this executive order. You know, so that, does that answer that question?
Yeah. So in your opinion, this executive order, because in the past, you know, Supreme Court stuff, really quickly, so in your opinion, this executive order that she's issued is legally binding as an executive order?
It is legally binding as of tomorrow, unless you would vote to make it less stringent.
Okay. Okay, that was the first question. Thank you for helping.
Welcome.
Okay, so we've all received all kinds of advice, but one thing that kind of stuck out to me was, in the document, on page four, the definitions, I mean, page four or five, item number four, definitions, B. Public space, indoor/outdoor space or area, open to the public, this does not include private residential property, or private offices, workspaces, blah, 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 that are not open to customers or public visitors. I've had a couple of questions about, well, if that's the case, and I'm a private public, or I'm a private office and workspace that are not open to customers, it's, that establishes that, but then in the previous number two, back on page three, the effective is at midnight. By the way, it's midnight tonight, is when it starts, 12:01 tonight. So some people are confused, it's Friday night, but it's tonight. So number C, so 2C, okay, I'm sorry, on number two, the first line, right after the date, "All businesses or organizations in Kansas must require all employees, blah, blah, blah." C says, "Employees working in or walking through common areas such as hallways, stairways, elevators, parking facilities." But if you're a private business, as defined in B, do they have to abide by the item in number two?
I...
In your...
I believe that they would.
We didn't have a chance to talk ahead of this.
Yeah, I think the exception there for private offices or workspaces would be limited to situations where it's not open to customers or public visitors. And so there are some businesses, or parts of businesses, perhaps, that are just not open to the public. And then, you know, the portion you mentioned on 2C of the executive order is really those areas people go to get from place to place. areas people go to get from place to place. If that portion, let me reread here.
Well, you could take...
I would think if that portion, like if there's a hallway that's, like, off limits to the public, I tend to think that would not be a public space, would not be the definition of public space, so therefore you wouldn't have to wear a mask in that area, because it would be accepted from the definition of a public space. I defer to any thoughts Mike Papun has on that, if he has any.
But, and again, Mike, I apologize, just trying to work through this since this afternoon or this morning, and seeing some of the...
And just looking at this, Mr. Chairman, and I want to reiterate, anybody trying to draft a policy like this has quite a challenge ahead, because they're very difficult to write without having some inconsistencies. But I think you've pointed out, one, possible inconsistency is whether, two, just primarily deals with businesses which have customers, or have people from the public coming in, which it probably implies, and the item on the next page, which kind of anticipates it's just a private office where you wouldn't have any kind of walk-in clients, but I think there's some ambiguity there.
I would agree.
Okay.
Okay. So that's my, there's probably, maybe another place or two, but I wanted to point both of those out. So thanks for clarifying number one, and thanks for confirming that it appears to be confusing or unclear on that, private. Because I had had a couple that actually took the time to point that out to me, and I went, well, I don't know. And so further looking, it does appear to be a little bit in conflict.
And I may follow up, Mr. Chairman, if that type of an ambiguity was a problem for the commission, we could modify this language by making it less restrict, by making, taking that ambiguity out and making it more clear, as well, so.
Okay. All right. Ready for other comments or questions? Either for Dr. Minz, or for Jason, and, I mean, Justin and Mike?
Okay. Oh, Commissioner Howell? Thank you, Mr. Chairman, just want to, just trying to process through this, and I apologize for not having very much time. I think everyone's struggling with the speed at which this came with, came to us, and the importance of this for our community, so trying to figure out issues that need to be addressed somehow. I looked at North Carolina's mask order, one thing they do, they address privately-owned vehicles. I think possibly, I mean, I think the spirit of the law, I don't think you need to have a mask when you're driving around by yourself, but it doesn't actually say that, but item 1D on page two, I think that, would that cover a privately-owned vehicle?
I think if you're in a privately-owned vehicle, you're not in a public space, or, let me double-check here, you're not either in a public space, you're not in public transportation, and you're not in a public space, I think that's what you're talking about, within six feet of another person. I don't think that this would apply to somebody in their, in their private vehicle. But you're right, it doesn't speak to it specifically.
And again, so the reason I bring that up is because North Carolina specifically states an exemption for that. I think it needs to be clearer that it is, and I, again, I understand the spirit of this, I think I know what she means to do here, but it isn't, doesn't lay it out the way I think it should be laid out. Another one of those examples is on page four, top of the page, talks about athletes. My imagination is we're talking about maybe like a basketball game, something like that, but what about someone who is, again, under North Carolina's mask order, they use the word strenuously exercising, so someone at, say, YMCA or another gymnasium, that they've got protocols in place, you're not near six, not near someone else, you're not breathing the same air, okay? There's social distancing opportunities in that space, and so they're not near each other, but they're strenuously exercising, there ought to be an exemption for that, but I don't think there's anything in here that would give an exemption, an exemption, because they're indoors.
I think you're correct, I don't think there's an exemption for that, so the rule would be that they'd probably have to wear a mask, as it's worded in the executive order.
I have concern about that. Another, so again, if we were to use this, I think we need to make some changes, and that's just another topic, another comment, we'll see if we get to that point or not. Another one would be, they make an exception for someone who's giving a speech for a broadcast or to an audience. So imagine, if you will, you go to church, and everyone's socially distancing, and the pastor's up on stage 30 feet away, because it's indoors, I think you still have to have a mask on. Even though social distancing's not the issue, they're further, way further than six feet from someone else, but because it's indoors, according to this order, they would have to wear a mask while they're preaching. Is that right?
I think that's accurate. I didn't list it in the list of exemptions, there is one specifically for the Kansas Legislature, I mentioned the one for court proceedings, but there's not a general, if somebody's speaking in public exemption in the executive order.
So again, this just points out some of the challenges of this order, the way it's currently written, and again, so I think, I know some people don't like the fact that our stay-at-home order, issued on March 22nd, had 26 exemptions, but as you, I think, as Mr. Papun just stated, it's hard to write one of these things and be thoughtful about every situation, but that is our challenge, we have to write it in a way that's actually implementable, if that's a word. And right now, as it's currently worded, there are some issues through this that I have very good concerns. Another one is, I imagine this, imagine this order goes forward, and someone has a disability, but it may not be visible. You're talking about mental disability, or medical disability of some sort, I think there's an exemption, they don't have to wear a mask if they have, if they have a disability of some sort. In my mind, that could be intellectual, it could be developmental, it could be mental, it could be physical, but there's a lot of things it could be, and my point would be that no one has to disclose those details to someone else. So when you see somebody in a place that's got, okay, say you're in Walmart, or Dylan's, or someplace like that, and someone was to be in there without a mask on, there may be a legitimate reason they're not wearing a mask based on disabilities, but that conflict that might happen, then, people challenging each other about why are you not wearing a mask, I think it needs to be very clear in here that they're not going to be required to essentially prove that disability, because I think it's a private matter. And so I'm concerned, we ought to have some language in here that protects that person from having, if you will, a challenge from other people who are questioning why, why they're not wearing a mask, if it's based on a disability. That's a private issue. So I have some language I would suggest there, but I'm not sure that's an issue for my colleagues to agree with me on that or not, but if we, if we want to go forward with this, there needs to be protections for people with disabilities plainly laid out in this policy, and it's not there yet.
Yeah, follow-up, Commissioner Mike Papun, County Counselor. I think businesses in large part, having dealt with the Americans with Disabilities Act for many years, are used to not asking people about specific disabilities, especially with regard to service animals and that sort of thing, so while that could easily be added and probably should, I think a lot of businesses don't pry into the actual specific disabilities of people.
And I believe that's true, Mr. Papun, I'm concerned about patrons against patrons, neighbors against neighbors. I think that there's a concern that people are going to go to blows over this, and I wouldn't say that except for, we've seen it in other states, we've seen it on TV. There is a lot of emotion, a lot of passion about these, about these things, and I want to make sure that it's clear that we are protecting people with disabilities. And I appreciate the fact that employers are very aware of ADA, and would be very careful not to do that, but I think there's still going to be a problem in the community when someone can't recognize that disability, and they think someone is not being legitimate in their, their non-compliance of wearing a mask. So I have a concern about that. Back to what Dr. Minz said earlier, one thing that's really not captured in this order, which I think is kind of missing the entire point here, and that is if you're, let's say you're inside of a facility that has a, you're inside of a building, let's go back to my spirit example, and you are doing your job, and the nearest person to you is 50 feet away, I don't think the spirit of this needs, says that you need to wear a mask, but the objective, technical aspect of this says you do. And I can think of all kinds of examples, if you're in a store, and you're the only one in the area, you're not near anybody else, the truth is, that mask isn't going to help you at that moment, but you still need to comply with this order, the way it's written, so if you're even by yourself, maybe you're inside of a building, the way this is written, you must, you must have a mask on. I think that the order ought to, ought to recognize the fact that social distancing is still the best safety measure, so it's the greatest risk mitigation is social distancing. So if you're not near anybody else, and I like the way the governor did word this, she says, "Maintain a six-foot distance except for infrequent or incidental moments of closer proximity." That's a nice phrase, that I think if you were able to maintain that standard, that a mask should not be, a mask shouldn't be required to anybody that can maintain that six-foot distance, no matter whether you're indoors or outdoors. But that doesn't really capture that, because indoors has a very broad requirement, no matter what the situation is, you have to have a mask on. So I think there should be recognition for people who are family, or close friends, or close, you know, close, their, their close relationships, they ought to, they ought to have some, some acknowledgement that they shouldn't be required to wear a mask when they're even less than six feet from each other. So again, the word of the way it's written right now, I have a lot of concerns, and I don't think I'm ready to adopt this today, I don't think it's ready for us to, it's not ready for prime time, it's got a lot of problems with it, the way it's currently written, and I would encourage my colleagues to, if we are going to go forward with this, we need to make some changes. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you. Tell me, try again where you said that you liked the language, because I'm...
I'm sorry, what?
Tell me again where you said the language that's in here that you liked.
The suggested language I came up with?
Well, no, no, where, what section were you talking about, where she had language that you felt good about?
Just for example, on page three, on item 2E, and then she uses this phrase multiple times throughout this, and you could actually simplify this order greatly, if you just looked at that phrase, it says, "Maintain a six-foot distance except for infrequent or incidental moments of closer proximity." If that's the only thing this said, understanding there's no enforcement, understanding there are maybe an age or disability exemption, that's probably all this actually has to say at all. You could take out two-thirds of this entire document, and hone in on that, on that phrase, and I think you'd have something that's maybe worthwhile, but as is, this is woefully inadequate as it's written currently.
Okay.
Thank you, Chairman.
Thanks, I'm trying to keep track of some of the conflicting language in some of the areas that are maybe absent, or that could be further defined. I don't know if you're keeping track of this too, Justin, but...
I've been making some notes, Chairman.
Are you? Okay, okay. I am intrigued as well, on G, on page four, the top G, 3G, so it's exempt from wearing masks on that G, back to that athletics stuff. I think the strenuous exercise word that Commissioner Howell introduced is, it resonated with me in that, in that, the CDC, I believe, says, "Social distancing assumes prolonged close contact, not instantaneous close contact." And Dr. Minz, I read, and you might want to, I'm going to say something that I've been quoted, and the CDC's definition of close contact is 15 minutes, but I always thought it was 10 minutes. Is it, do you know if the CDC is really 15 minutes, is their definition of close contact?
I have to look on the website.
Okay, all right. Well, that's, that's, okay. So that would mean, some of these sporting events, that even you take basketball, although you have incidental moments, you sure don't have, I don't think in basketball, you don't, you don't have 10 minutes of really close contact with one person, but you're running around, so the, I think to eliminate the volleyball and basketball, if that's not part of this, athletes are engaged, or if somehow we made that to where our, I just go back to the, obviously, I've got a little bit of passion about, I just think it's so valuable for our youth to still have the ability to try to interact and be active, so that, you know, strenuous exercise helps add to that, but...
Mr. Chairman, if I might, and Justin can interrupt, there does seem to be a gap with regard to things like health clubs, maybe, and non-organized sporting activity, I mean, not everything, when I read organized sporting activities, I think of Little League baseball, and, you know, basketball tournaments and things like that, I don't think of just people out engaged playing pickup basketball, or at the Y engaged in an aerobics class, so I'm not sure that that's covered by this.
And if it's not covered, I think when Commissioner Howell was asking about that earlier, there's a presumption they have, the person has to wear a mask unless there's an exception, I think that's how it would...
And that's our business, our business call today was really good with our participant, tell me again, Jacob Wayman? Tell me, or Health Club. He went, they went through their process, and without this order even, they have a pretty good process, and I think once they get to an area, or a level, or even a class, they were even talking about classes where they could distance, then they did not require masks, if I heard him right, is that correct? Is that what you heard? Okay. So, you just wonder if this would, I like that theory, but, orange theory, by the way, I like it, but I think it, this might be limiting, limiting to those, and of course, we've got the YMCA and others that have similar cases where somebody's working out, and I think working out with a mask on is a difficult, it's just difficult, you can't work out, heavy breathing, whatever you want to do, so.
Okay. Commissioner Dennis?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You know, every time that we have anything come up involving this, I'm always interested in what's going on with schools, but I don't pick anything up directly that it addresses schools. We've got to have something in place here in the very near future on how we're going to get our kids back in classrooms. As I said many times, they're our future, and we need to make sure that there are safeguards, not only for the students, but also for the teachers. Does this just blanketly, then, because it's a public space, does it, by default, mean that the schools are a part of this?
As I read it right now, Commissioner Dennis, I think that it would apply to schools, and, you know, whether teachers, other faculty members, and the students as well, unless they're five years old or younger. The, you know, I would point out, I didn't go through it, there's a lot of stuff in House Bill 2016 that passed, but the governor was restricted on her ability through an executive order to close schools unless she got a vote agreeing with that by the State Board of Education. So, you know, as it's drafted now, it would apply to schools, obviously, it could be amended between now and the start of schools, but, you know, if school, if there was a school that was in session today, I think it would apply to them, that would be a public space, and there'd be an expectation that the folks would wear a mask.
So the students that are in gym classes, they're going to have to, because it's kind of nebulous on sports, so does that mean gym classes, they're going to be wearing it too?
I would think so. The only exception would be if they're, you know, organized sports activity I would view as kind of like people were talking about Little League sports, or, you know, if you, you know, like a little, you know, if you had a tennis game, you know, an organized tennis game, I don't know that it would apply to just, you know, PE, Physical Education class of school, I'm not sure that exception would apply.
With the last bond issue, they put on beautiful naditoriums in the schools, so when they're swimming, they're going to be wearing a mask?
I actually thought about that before, how does, how does swimming get calculated into this, and I mean, there's no exception there, but I wouldn't think that you would want someone, I mean, Dr. Minz could speak to that, but I don't think wearing a mask while swimming would be very conducive to what you want to do.
Well, I still think there's a lot of questions that aren't, we're all bringing up questions, and I don't know that there are answers right now. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Commissioner O'Donnell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Did you, did you have a motion, Mr. Chairman, that you wanted to do?
I have one, I'm contemplating, yeah, but not right now.
Okay.
Do you have one that you'd like to make?
No, the chairman talked to me earlier about one.
No, but I would state that, boy, we've had a lot of information. When a, when a business is called and said, hey, I treat my employees, they mask, we have public, we require public customers to wear masks, and made a really relevant point that, that they're... point that, that their employees leave, and so he doesn't know, he doesn't know what their employees do after hours, and, and so he was advocating a really solid reason why a masking, of course, he believes that it protects a lot, but, but he knows that it protects during his hours of operation, and then after hours of operation, he's got some employees he knows that are objecting to masks, and so they come in the next day, so he doesn't know what's going on. So there's a, there's a, there's some businesses, and what we heard on the, on the call, the business calls earlier today, I, I hope that some of you are able to tune in because there were some really compelling practices, really compelling practices from hotels to, to restaurants and things that you could just tell that if, if everybody was just doing everything that these people were doing, it would be very good. And again, from Dr. Menz's perspective, I don't know how this, the call today would indicate that we're doing great because of all the practices that they're doing, but we still see the positive cases from testing going up. The other thing that was incredibly informational and enlightening to me, I didn't, wasn't planning on spending three hours having it on in the background, was the Johnson County case this morning. Their, their health official was there and they end up having a lot of live public comment, and it went, that part went quite long, but, but they're struggling with the same areas that we're struggling with, but their numbers are quite a bit, quite a bit more drastic. And they're alarmed by the hospitalization world, so, in their, in the Kansas City area. I do have a question that, about, in the conversations, Dr. Menz, that you're having with the hospitals, have they indicated, I remember when we first started this, they, they banned or they stopped elective surgeries? Have they, I know they're concerned, but could you address if they've mentioned to you if they're, because I know elective surgeries are now back in place?
I've heard of no conversations about suspending elective surgeries at this time, although I've not been present in their strategic planning meetings and whatever, but I've certainly heard nothing to that.
Yeah. Okay. Might have another question or two, but not yet. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I guess I just want to remind folks that this executive order was reviewed by our Attorney General, so he, he reviewed it and revised this. You know, as the Board of Health, our job is to protect the health and well-being of people, and we're facing, I mean, I, I'm just going to state some obvious things, we're facing a pandemic. It's led to over 127,000 American lives lost. Dr. Menz, our health officer, has told us that wearing masks helps slow the spread. Obviously, there is a lot of other information that we should listen to as well. I just want to state that when I was looking at this, there's a lot of talk around forcing someone to do something. Well, I'll just remind everybody that according to our legal counsel, there are not any constitutional rights that would be violated through a mandatory mask rule. Government, which is what we are, can pass laws to get you to not blow potentially harmful particles around others in public, hence the Kansas Clean Indoor Clean Air Act, which generally prohibits smoking indoors. Government can pass laws to get you to wear something to protect yourself and others, hence the Kansas Seatbelt Law. It makes it a crime to not wear a seatbelt. Both of these have been upheld in our courts. Sedgwick County has a resolution that prohibits smoking and utilization of e-cigarettes indoors within 25 feet of an entrance into county buildings. The aim behind these laws isn't to enforce criminal or civil penalties. The aim is to get people to comply with the laws to reduce, reduce deaths and injuries and to mitigate against other health risks. A mask mandate is similar in scope to other laws mentioned above. The goal, the end goal, is the protection of public health. Wearing a mask, while it may be very inconvenient, it's a reasonable, common sense step that can be taken to help combat the spread of COVID-19. As the Board of Health I mentioned before, it's our responsibility to keep people healthy because healthy people means a healthy economy. In order for businesses to remain open and functioning, they need people to work and people as patrons. People who are sick can't work. People who are sick can't spend money in your business. So our strong recommendations have landed us over 100 new cases in 24 hours. Our strong recommendations now have completely overwhelmed our health department. Everybody talks about overwhelming our hospital systems, but what about our health department? Each one of these commissioners up here has talked about supporting staff. Mandating masks is one way to support our health department in helping take care of the residents of Sedgwick County. I know for a fact that every single one of these commissioners up here, including myself, has received requests for test results, frustrations around not receiving those back in a timely manner, not receiving a call back. Why are, why are we seeing a slow call return to our constituents in our community? Because our health department is overrun with people to take care of. You know, one thing that I keep hearing is that, and, and my friend Stephanie on Facebook wrote this, and she makes a very good point, and she says, "People who are pushing masks are talking, talking about protecting others. People who are pushing to not wear a mask are focused on themselves and not others. Wearing a mask is not for me. Wearing a mask is for you." I don't take it lightly that we talk about the clusters in our community. We talk about just, you know, each of these commissioners up here receive a cluster update, and just yesterday, we had four in long-term care facilities. I used to work in senior living, and in fact, I was very delighted to hear from Tim Buchanan, whom is where I got my senior living start, a very staunch Republican who is for mandated masking. He even expressed it on our business call today. Please go back and watch that later. I think it's really a testament to the United States when we talk about California, Connecticut, Delaware, District of Columbia, Hawaii, Illinois, Kentucky, Maine, Maryland, Massachusetts, Michigan, Nevada, New Jersey, New Mexico, New York, Oregon, Pennsylvania, Rhode Island, and just a few moments ago, Texas, all mandated masks. We have how many things in our toolbox? I didn't bring a toolbox, I was going to, but we have hand hygiene, we have masks, and we have distance. That's what we have in our toolbox. I also wanted to bring some glitter today and just shove it around, because when you're sitting with friends and you're all doing a project and one person uses glitter, everybody has glitter on them. If we could see this virus, would you be taking it more seriously? If you knew somebody who passed away, would you be taking it more seriously? I, I want to read a message that we received from the leadership at Costco, and this is what it says. Why does county, why, what support does the county feel like it can give to businesses in supporting the mandate from the governor? We have been requiring masks for employees and members for some time. We have borne a tremendous amount of grief from folks. My concern is now the governor comes out and mandates this, and right away, the reaction from the city and county is there will be no enforcement. I feel like business is being left to be the keeper of the standards, but nothing, with nothing but suggestions from our civic leaders. I'm extremely proud of my job, I'm extremely proud of the job my team and my company has done in setting the bar for this community. I am unsure who else to turn to on this, but it would be great if we could all stand together. People who do not understand or want to understand will need the nudge from the powers that be. They have already demonstrated the inability to follow guidelines. I get it, this is not fun, but we are elected to lead this county through a pandemic. As the public health officials, we can't just sit by and make recommendations. It is our job to set these rules. I just want to make sure that we all understand that over the past couple of weeks, this commission has been back and forth over a policy for roads. There has been no consensus. We have gone back and forth and back and forth. We tabled it again yesterday, and that's a policy over roads. We're talking about a policy for public health, and already I see the writing on the wall that we're going to be back and forth, back and forth. So what happens? Do we have a lot of time to lose? As the only commissioner up here with a child, a school-aged child, I need for my child to go back to school, and I think that I can speak for all the other parents who need their children to go back to school. Teachers are a godsend. They are professional. They know how to teach our children. Our children need to be seated in those seats this coming fall. The more we hem and haw around doing something and taking a tangible action, we can't wait. I'll close with one thing. When we talk about enforcement, that's one of the sticking points of this. When you think about enforcement, there's a lot of old-school mentality that says, arrest them, stick them in the back of a car. We have to think about new ways to enforce things. Why can't we educate, inform, and give out masks? That's our enforcement, be it good or bad. But to not mandate a mask is to say, okay, do whatever you want and keep the cases climbing. I'm not okay with people dying, not one more person. Yesterday, we voted for more dead space in our community. It's very sad to even think about. I know I'm going long-winded, but I have one concern, I guess, with this executive order, and that would be that there is no real date as to when this mask mandate would be over. So can we speak to that? Because I don't see anywhere where it says when it would end, how long it would go, when there would be a new consideration.
Yes, Commissioner Cruz, on that, on that question, the, on page five, just above the governor's signature, it indicates it would remain in force until rescinded or until the statewide state of disaster emergency extended by House Bill 2016 expires, whichever is earlier. Now, if the board would deem it appropriate, I mean, one of the things I think you could do to make it less stringent would be to narrow a timeframe down to have it be in place, you know, a certain number of days, like, or 30 days, or, that's just an example, maybe a period of time that's, that's different than that, you know, and I would probably suggest if that action would be taken, that it would somehow say that if the executive order gets rescinded or modified, that could also change the timeframe. But I think that's something that, if the will of the boards to do that, I think you could.
Okay. So I guess, okay, that answers my question. I would just ask you people, the people of Sedgwick County and everybody in this room, to think about the most vulnerable person in your life. Think about the person who you know whose aunt or uncle or grandmother has cancer. Think about the people in this community who have, who are not feeling well. We don't know what's going on in people's lives, and I would be forever very, very, just, I wouldn't be able to live with myself knowing that I contracted a virus and gave it to somebody else, but I survived because I'm healthy. But if I gave it to somebody else, we don't want that to happen. So thank you, Chairman, for allowing me that.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions for anybody? Commissioner Howell. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I don't know much, we've talked about this today, it's kind of all running together at this point, but, Justin, can you talk a little bit about the enforcement aspect of this? I mean, if we wanted to enforce this, do we have that authority?
Yeah, I'll, I'll try to answer that, Commissioner Howell. If, if this executive order went into place today as is, the, the, I think I talked before about that there wouldn't be, someone would not be able to be charged with a crime, it would instead be at most a civil penalty of up to a $2,500 fine. Earlier today, Derek Schmidt, the Attorney General, did issue an opinion to law enforcement officers about this executive order in particular, clarifying that law enforcement's role would not be to, you know, they can't apprehend somebody for this, they would not be able to place them into custody for this because it's only a civil action. It would be instead the district attorney's, you know, responsibility to potentially write any civil actions against somebody who would be in violation. The county commission, you know, nothing in this executive order would require you to come up with something on an enforcement end. Does that...
But even if we wanted to, do we have the authority to create some type of enforcement?
I don't believe that you would on this. I defer to any thoughts that, that Mr. Papoun may have, but I, I don't believe, and, and let me clarify, I think you're talking about enforcement from the standpoint of bringing a civil action, or, or bringing some sort of, okay, to clarify, what was it?
Well, again, so I'm referring back to the, the letter that was read from someone at Costco there, talked about, we quickly, you know, talked about we were not, we didn't have an interest in enforcing this. I just wanted to clarify, I don't think we have the authority under the law. It's just, it's more of a matter of fact, not more than, more than it's an opinion, it's more, more of a matter of fact, we don't have the authority essentially to do any type of enforcement, because I think House Bill 2016 took care of that.
I, I don't think that the county would have any role in that. I would presume, and it's, it's, it's dangerous to do that sometimes, but the letter was probably talking more about law enforcement, whether at the, at the county or city, city Wichita level. The, and I would say to what Commissioner Cruz had said about enforcement, you know, and I think that I said this back on the stay-at-home order, enforcement can take a range of different things. It doesn't mean has to be criminal, doesn't mean it has to be seeking some sort of legal action in court. It could be as simple as, you know, handing out a mask. It could be, you know, suggesting that someone should wear a mask, and so there, there are a range of enforcement actions that can be available, but, you know, in terms of actual legal actions, the statute doesn't contemplate the county counselor initiating anything. It talks about county attorneys or district attorneys, and, and Mr. Papoun is neither one of those, because we happen to be a county that has both a district attorney and a county counselor. In smaller counties, that's, that role is often merged in the county attorney. So I, I don't think there's any role that county staff outside of the district attorney's office would have in bringing any of those actions.
Okay, that's kind of what I thought. Okay, appreciate the answer. I don't have a question for you right now, I just want to make a comment or two here. It was in the news yesterday, I guess I saw, I don't know if anybody else saw this or not, but there's apparently some, some new data regarding children and going back to school. Other places in the world, the children have returned to school, and they have watched the demographics of, of what the impact that that has, has, has had on those communities. I've seen some data on this just in the last day or so. I've seen some data on this just in the last day or so, and one thing I'd say about the North Carolina order, the mask order that they have there, they exempt children under age 11. And I think maybe that's intended to keep the K through 12, or K through 11, excuse me, not K through 12, K through 5, perhaps. Those children maybe would have different rules in different facilities, I guess, but there's actually a thought that the, you know, in theory, Dr. Minz probably wouldn't agree with this, but in theory, those kids could contract the disease and probably spread it around, but in practice, looking at the data, it appears that's not what, not what's happening. These kids, for whatever reason, don't seem to be spreading the virus around like adults do, for whatever reason. I'm not sure that that, I'm not saying that correctly, but apparently there's a difference. And so one of my frustrations is we, we didn't really have good data earlier, earlier this year. Now, we all did what we thought was prudent and best at the time with the data, with the data that we did have, but we were the very first state in the nation to shut down our schools. And I thought, looking backwards now, I think that was a mistake. We issued the stay-at-home order with 26 exemptions, and now we've, we've essentially reversed most of that, and we have a bigger problem today than we did back when that order was issued. I said at the time, I didn't think we had data to issue such an order at that time. I think it was a mistake. The day that was ordered, we only had one case of COVID-19 in Sedgwick County. And here we are. I think the appetite for people to see more government orders, when the data doesn't seem to be what we were told back in March, still isn't there yet, the appetite of the people to see more government orders is still night. There's, I think the people, many of them are not convinced that this is the right thing for us to do at this time. I would encourage us to send our kids back to school, no matter what. I think they need to be, they need to go back to school in August. And I would encourage our decision-makers that make that decision to do everything they can to get those kids back in school. I don't know that these numbers necessarily should impact those decisions if those children are not spreading that around. So again, that's, that's, that's new data, I'm not sure that we understand that completely yet. And then finally, I'd just say this, that whatever we do, if we're going to change government orders and government rules on the people, on the people of our community, we need to have a long haul, a long-term viewpoint of this. I'm going to go, I'm going to make the guess that if Dr. Minz sees our, if we issue this mask order and Dr. Minz sees this data go the right direction, they're not going to want to undo this mask order. So my point is, it's here to stay. If we issue a new order, we need to understand it's probably going to be here until we have a vaccination that's readily available. In fact, Dr. Minz, when you first briefed us back in March, one thing you said was, is that if I could get what I wanted, I would have everyone isolate until we have a vaccination. And so the point is, the vaccination, optimistically, is January, but readily available is probably next summer. So we're talking about a mask order on our people for a year. And that, to me, is very sobering, when we only got this order today, and we, in my opinion, it's, it's got some problems with the way it's worded, for us to implement this quickly in a matter of hours is not fair for us as policymakers to do such a thing. We need to slow this down. Thank you, Chairman.
Thank you, Commissioner. I know you've mentioned before, Commissioner Howell, that you think that whatever we do is long-term. I, I probably don't agree that, that we can't make changes. This is not a, this thing is not a static world in this COVID world. It is very fluid, and, and I think the public would want us to know that we can make adjustments and be flexible based on the way the events go, if it's, so if there's any other lights, well, I'm prepared to make a motion, and maybe we can have some more discussion if we'd like. But the, the enforcement is very challenging, and the enforcement, having our two key law enforcement leaders, the sheriff and the chief of police, indicating that publicly that they do not, they cannot put the personnel to enforce this. There may be options, education, whatever, but they're on, pretty much publicly in place that they can't enforce. I happen to be one that I have incredible trust, as proven today even on our call, that the businesses, the responsible, and our citizens, everybody's trying, most everybody in our community is doing the very best they can to protect themselves, their, their families, their jobs, their, the public, and, and our community overall. And of course, the community health is of tremendous utmost importance. It's highest on our radar screens right now, and it's got all the emotion about it. There's a, there's not a win-win here from my perspective, but this being, being sent to us, I, I would, my motion, and I know, Commissioner Cruz, you, you mentioned the strongly recommendation, but based on a few of these items that are unclear in this order, and my motion will be to, to accept the executive order number 2052 without being a mandate, but a strongly recommended wording instead of the mandate. I will also say that I will pay laser-focused attention every day now, meaning I don't like the news that we have the last 24 hours. And if that news continues to go wrong, and if Monday, we have our direct contact with our hospitals, and if that, if these numbers are going wrong, then I don't like to, I don't like to champion one person having, as a chair, to have the authority. But in this case, it's that important to me, that if these numbers are going wrong, I will, I will call for a, another special meeting, and I will totally reverse what I did today, is this motion, and I will then recommend that between now and, and over the weekend or even Monday, I don't know if it's going to happen Monday, but Tuesday, we can get together and maybe clear up a few of these things. I believe that we have open dialogue with the governor's office to help clarify, clarify stuff and make it a little cleaner. And if the numbers go down and the community continues to, to work together, seems like, I think they can work together. There's been a lot of emotion that doesn't sound like if the, if the, I don't, I hope that the, the ones that hate masks don't run into the ones that love masks in the community, because that wouldn't be a pretty scene right now, but, because of all the emotion. But, so with that said, again, I want to repeat, this, this is not, this is not anything that should be taken anything but just very serious. And I'm taking it serious. This is an incredible amount of pressure on all of us. I appreciate the businesses that are already doing everything they can, and if mandating masks is one more tool that will help them because our, our numbers go, go the wrong way, then I will call for a special meeting and, and request that, that we implement further on this executive order number 2052.
And Chairman, just to clarify, and I'd welcome any, any thoughts you have on that, just to make sure, would, would that motion include the draft findings from the masks recommended draft? Or, I just didn't know, to clarify, the statute would require, if you're going to do something less stringent than the governor's order today, if that is what you would intend to do, to have an order with findings included within it. It doesn't have to look exactly like that, of course, but I just wanted to clarify on the motion.
Justin, my motion is just to accept 2052 as it is.
Okay.
But only strongly recommend, instead of mandate, while we work through this and we observe. So I don't know if that's possible to be a motion, or if I have to point out inconsistencies in her motion and reasonings or whatever as part of our motion. I'm open.
Mr. Chairman, I think all that Justin is getting at is if you want to achieve what you're trying to do in this motion, you might want to accept the order as drafted for the recommended, mask recommended, because if you don't have some of these findings, you wouldn't be complying with the latest House bill, and that would still achieve, I think, what you want to achieve, so.
That's correct. And I, I would add, I think based on some of the comments Dr. Minz said, I'm not sure if you would want to have section 2B on there, some of the most updated information on hospitalization. Those numbers were much higher than what's showing on the, significantly higher than what's showing on the county's dashboard, and so I'm not sure that item 2B would be what part of those findings anymore. I think you want to have solid findings. I have some concerns that perhaps the, I'm not sure exactly what the numbers were in April, but I don't think it, the numbers now would be significantly lower than what they were then, so I'm not sure that you, you would want to keep that in your order.
Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I believe staff put together for a motion, just a recommendation draft, which might take away any confusion that you have.
Okay.
About that. I assume you're the one that wrote this up, Justin?
I did, Commissioner O'Donnell. That's correct.
So, Justin, in your opinion, if this would be the recommend, the mask recommendation draft, would we would do it?
I think that would, and in line with what Mike Papoun was saying a bit ago, I think that probably with a, a modification to 2B, just based on new information that Dr. Minz introduced today, would, would probably suffice for what, what it is you intend. As, as you stated, Chairman, you could always, you and the other commissioners could always go back in and make, modify what you might do through any order today. I don't think there's any limitation on your ability to do that. So if you did end up deciding later on that you wanted to change it, tweak it, anything along those lines, I think that would be fair game.
Okay, so our recommended draft with the change to section 2B.
That, it's your motion, Chairman, I'm just, that was something that, in the presentation, I don't know that that one would be applicable anymore, but I think that's, that's a way to make it comply with House Bill 2016's requirements.
Justin, I'm sorry, it's frustrating because I spent a lot of time and effort on her executive order 2052. Maybe we have to recess so I can review what you handed out at the beginning of this, unless the rest of the commissioners comfortable with what they've read. But it basically replaces what? The first whereas pursuant? The first whereas governor issued order 2052? Does that become part of this recommendation draft?
The best way to explain it, Chairman, I don't think it, what it would do is, if you look at section three on page two, it says all, I think it does the same thing more or less that your motion would do, in essence. It says, "All of the provisions within executive order number 2052 that require persons to wear masks or face coverings, and that require businesses and organizations to require persons to wear masks or face coverings, shall not be mandated, but would instead be strongly recommended measures within Sedgwick County." So I think that lines up with what your motion was. I'm sorry, I was just trying to clarify, and I'm afraid with the number of documents we've had circulate, circulating on this, it's very confusing, so I apologize for that.
I understand, and that actually is very helpful. So I would agree then. So my motion would be for the mask recommendation as drafted with updated information as of today, after, as of today's numbers for section 2B, whatever those, whatever those numbers is. Okay.
So you're taking out letter B?
Yeah, I think it might be worth clarifying, Chairman. You'd be taking out 2B, is that correct, understanding that?
Because the hospitalizations are not lower than April 20th.
Correct. Okay.
So you'd have to remove it completely?
I, I think that's, is that?
Okay, that's appropriate. Yes, sir. So we've got a motion in a second, or David Dennis, first of all, go ahead.
Thank you, Chairman.
Sorry about that.
Let me just make a couple comments. First of all, I want to urge all the public to wear a mask. I wear one every time that I go out. I wear one at church. I wear one when my wife and I go to dinner. It is important to wear a mask. I appreciate all the comments that we received at our one o'clock meeting today from the, from the business and industry, because each and every one of those folks that spoke to us today have a plan on how that they're going to protect their employees and the customers that come in. The problem is that the rest of the community isn't complying with that plan. One of the, of the comments that we had today from one of the individuals is that he recommended that we have more success by strongly recommending that no one wants to, to be the masked police. We can accomplish the same thing by strongly recommending something rather than a mandate. I agree with Commissioner Meitzner that if it gets worse, we need to adjust. But right now, I am not ready to do that adjustment. We have to take this very seriously. We have to ask the rest of the citizens to take this seriously when they go out. Our job is to protect our liberty, but one of the problems that we have is that we have to consider how that we're going to enforce this. We have to educate the people that this is serious, that we really and truly need to wear our masks when we're going out. But the problem, as I said, is enforcement. What we're going to go into this weekend is the Fourth of July weekend, and we're all going to celebrate our freedoms, but those freedoms can't be taken for granted either. But if you want to see a mandate that is unenforceable, you'll see it this weekend. All you've got to do is go out any night and watch the fireworks over the city of Wichita. And they have an ordinance on the books that says you can't shoot anything over six foot in the air. It's unenforceable. So what we have to do is educate our citizens that this is serious. We have people that are going into the hospital, we have people in nursing homes that are dying. We, as commissioners, take this seriously. But how do we get that seriousness out to the, to the public? I don't know that it's with a mandate, because I don't think it's enforceable. So it's going to have to come down to education. We have to tell everyone, this is important. But I truly support what Commissioner Meitzner has put forth right now, because I don't think that putting a mandate out that's unenforceable is the right direction to go. But again, if we see that this motion and second that's on the board right now, that if that passes, if we need to adjust, and believe me, we're going to have to adjust, because we can't continue to have the numbers go up and people end up in the hospitals and other folks dying. So I support it. I do not want to get to the point where that we're going to have an unenforceable mandate out there. So that's my justification and the reasons that I truly believe that we, this motion is applicable at this time. But as Commissioner Meitzner said, I am ready to change in a heartbeat if we need to change. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Howell?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I can count to three, three people have spoken in favor of this, so I assume this is going to pass, but I do want to make some comments before we vote, and that is, I believe all, I believe many of us do believe in the idea of limiting government and personal responsibility, and that's kind of what this is all about. And I think, I agree with the comments of Commissioner, Commissioner Dennis, this is a serious matter. We do need to educate, we need more people to take this seriously and personally that they would wear masks when they don't really want to. It does help. I, I also will wear a mask, I have been doing that, and I'll continue to wear a mask. I respect this virus. I respect this virus, I don't want it to get worse than it is. Having said that, this, this executive order came to us very quickly, without much note, without much notice for us to respond to, and I think we've identified a lot of problems with, with the order as it's currently stated. We have the option of not, not adopting this today and take it up next week, probably next Wednesday would be a good time to do that. And because of that, I think we have, there's enough questions in here the way it's worded. I've raised a number of those already. I have people contacting me quite a lot on how to, how to interpret this. I don't know, I don't know what to tell them. So although we're strongly recommending this, we don't have clarity. And there's a lot of people out there that are very passionate, they're going to follow this to the very best of their ability, but they don't know exactly what this, what's been required of them. So I think, my perspective is, I think we'd like, I'd like to see us slow this down a little bit and take it up next week with changes. And so I would like to see us not adopt this, but to suspend, suspend action on this order, not have it going to affect tonight, and take up whatever our, our position would be next week with probably some amendments to clean up the language, make this more, more usable for the public. So that's my position. Thank you, Chairman.
Okay. Commissioner O'Donnell.
Thank you. In regards to what Commissioner Howell just said, I think he and I align a lot on this issue, but the reason why I'm good with proceeding with what Commissioner Meitzner's put ahead is because it is a holiday weekend, it's the Fourth of July weekend. I do believe we, as a Board of Health, need to put out a statement that we strongly recommend this. We do not want to go back as a community. I am more than willing to look at this again next week to see what we need to do, but I feel like right now it's way too important for us not to set a standard that we believe it's important. I'm not going to question the governor's motives, I'm not going to question the motives of people that want us to mandate the mask right now, even though I personally disagree with that, because I do believe, personally, I do believe it's unconstitutional to tell somebody what they can and can't wear. We yell about that, about Middle Eastern countries that force women to wear things they might not want to wear. I, I just inherently don't believe that's American. But what I do believe is that as the Board of Health, we need to be setting a standard. And Commissioner Meitzner has battled this a lot this week, I've talked to him quite a few times. I know he personally struggled with where to find the balance of personal freedom and protecting the citizens of Cedric County. I'm there with him, but we have to tell people that this is too important, and I personally have not done as good a job of wearing masks as I need to, because I personally do not like it, just like everybody else, but I'm going to start doing better. That, that's my own personal goal, is to wear a mask when I go out, but this is too serious to just kick the can down to next week. But let's circle back, we'll see what happens over the weekend, and then I'm more than willing to have that conversation. But I feel like this is a very balanced approach with Commissioner Meitzner's motion, that's why I second it, and I just appreciate the ability that we all had to come together and discuss this. So thank you, Mr. Chair, and that, and thank you, Commissioner Howell, because I, I agree with you in principle.
Okay. Thank you, Commissioner O'Donnell. Commissioner Cruz.
Thank you, Chairman. I guess I would just have to ask, what's the threshold that we, that we need to get to? Is it a number of cases that increases? And history states that what happens today will see two weeks from now, so we could visit this next week and not see what had happened over the Fourth of July holiday. So I, I think that we have seen that recommendations don't work, people don't comply, and that is why I will not be supporting this recommendation today.
Okay. I totally respect what you're, what you're saying, Commissioner Cruz. We've never put a threshold of saying so many hospital beds or so many hospitals, ICUs and whatever, but I think there's an awareness that, that we've relied on before that, for me, I've got a lot of respect for our medical community, and, and my threshold to call for a special meeting will be based on, based on, on that. And I don't know what the number is, but they will, I'm sure, be willing to let me know. So that said, so it is, I think, public, thank you for watching. I think you've seen how, how serious a matter this is. It's incredibly, tired of saying it, how emotional it is. It's been very divisive in our community. I, I wish that our, that our media would be a little more supportive of, of the community in general and not, not promote the divisiveness that's going on, but I, I understand that that's part of, that's part of today's world. So with that, and I, again, I can't thank the community and the businesses, I wish them continued success and luck, and we support, and I, and I hope to, that we'll get through this as a community. So I don't see any other comments, so Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner O'Donnell?
Aye.
Commissioner Dennis?
Aye.
Commissioner Howell?
No.
Commissioner Cruz?
No.
Chairman Meitzner?
Aye. The motion carries three to two. Is there any other business that comes before the commission? With that, we stand adjourned. Thank you, everybody.